Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Public participation in this meeting can be done by attending live at the meeting or watching the meeting live on Channel 4, or you can go to lhcaz.gov/tv to watch a meeting as well. We'll now have an invocation from Stephanie LeWares from the Community Presbyterian Church. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Let's pray together. Father God, we come together this evening with the interest of our city at heart. And I just ask that you would just grant the members of the city council gathered here and just all concerned, the wisdom to govern and just the clarity to make the choices best for our city and its citizens, a thirst for justice and for righteousness, confidence in what is good and right and fitting for this great and beautiful city of Lake Havasu, and the ability to work together in harmony, both what is spoken in this room and once we go from this place and make the decisions that's fitting, the conversation that we have together as leaders and as community members, that we can work together for good and for growth and for this great community that we love together, that we can just work together to keep it to be this great thriving place that we love so much. Be with us, Lord, and just fill us with your Spirit today. Guide us, guard us, and protect us in all that we do, and just continue to protect our men and women that serve this country, both in the military and our first responders. We pray this in your holy name today. Amen.
Thank you. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Western Welcome Club of Arizona. Or led by me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item four, the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Jim Dolan, David Lane, Michelle Lynn, Cameron Moses,
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch, here. Mayor Kalshihi, here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the call to the public. This is an opportunity for citizens that wish to address the city council with matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City to address the council. Their comments are limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. Again, this is not agendized, so if you speak to council during Call to the Public, we can listen intently, but we can't have a two-way conversation because it's not on the agenda. Would anyone like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person call to the public, and we are also still receiving public feedback and public comment via email@lhcaz.gov. And Ms. Williams, I believe we do have a couple of calls to the public.
The items received were for 8.3 and 8.4.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, I'll close the call to the public. Moving on to item six, the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussions? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. We'll start with item 7.1, which is the Fiscal Year 2020-21 Third Quarter Contracted Agency Reports. Chief Doyle has included these in our packet. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, they'll be filed as record. Moving on to item 7.2 is Announce Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies, both current and upcoming, on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commission. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one regular non-pilot member, and one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, three regular members, one student member. Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Applications can be picked up at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Kooten, and happy birthday to you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this evening's report with a congratulations to Jill Olson and our team in Admin Services, in particular, our Finance Team. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, our GFOA, presented a distinguished Budget Presentation Award to Lake Havasu City, Arizona, for its annual budget for this fiscal year. In order to receive this award, a government unit must publish a budget document that meets certain criteria as a policy document, as a financial plan, as an operations guide, and as a communications device. Again, congratulations to you, Jill Olson, and your team for all their outstanding work and on the work that was performed for the development of the budget this year. Recently, the Lake Havasu City Transit Division received a generous donation in the amount of $80,000 from a local family that were regular riders of the Lake Havasu City Transit System. For many years, Mr. and Mrs. Wiki utilized the public transit system to get them where they needed to go, and they voiced their positive interactions with the transit staff and the services that were available to them. The staff meant a lot to the Wikis, and the Wikis were very well liked by our staff. The donation will be used to continue to provide top-notch customer service and transit services, as the Wikis experience. Citizens and towns throughout the nation gathered on Memorial Day to honor and remember the courageous men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in the defense of our country and the reasons for the freedoms we have today. And Lake Havasu City is no different. As a resident, local veteran organizations, state, county, city staff, and officials joined in the ceremony. Mayor Shihi, you officially proclaimed the day announcing Lake Havasu City, Arizona, as a prime example of a city working together with friends, neighbors, and veteran groups to ensure that the sacrifices made by our nation's finest and bravest never go unappreciated and that they are never forgotten. Mayor Shihi, you proclaim June 6th as Cancer Survivors' Day in Lake Havasu City. This year, there is estimated 1.9 million new cancer cases diagnosed and 608,000 cancer deaths in the United States. A cancer survivor is defined as anyone living with a history of cancer from the moment of diagnosis through the remainder of their life, and there are 14.6 million cancer survivors right now in America. And Mayor, in your proclamation, you acknowledge all cancer survivors and those who support them, including the Cancer Association of Havasu, which provides programs including low-cost early-detection screenings and public education, as well as support groups for cancer survivors within our community. The Department of Arizona and 90 members from the Marine Corps League Detachment across the state of Arizona, all of the detachments across the state of Arizona, attended their 50th Annual Convention this past weekend, hosted by our local Marine Corps Detachment Number 757. The members of the Marine Corps League Detachment 757 are very active in our community, raising money to donate to various causes throughout the community. They give their time and energy working at various fundraisers throughout the year, and we are very appreciative of their efforts. Mayor Shihi, welcome all detachments to our great city and proclaim the weekend of June 4th through June 6th as the Marine Corps League Days in Lake Havasu City. And finally, the information here is presented by the Mojave County Public Health Department, and the numbers are as of yesterday, as of Monday, June 7th. You can see the breakdown, and we are looking at 27 active COVID cases in Lake Havasu City at the moment. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, our public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, a Series 10 Beer and Wine Liquor Store License for HavaGas LHC, 2085 Palaverdy Boulevard North. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Rajinder Soha has applied for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for HavaGas LHC located at 2085 Palaverdy Boulevard North. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 10 liquor license. Staff recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We also did not receive any written comment on this item. Bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes, Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for HavaGas LHC, 2085 Palaverdy Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 21-3505, Amending Resolution Number 20-3417, Transferring Budget Appropriations From One Fund, Department, or Division to Another for Fiscal Year 2020-21. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This first item, I do not have a formal presentation, so I'll give a verbal presentation for this one. This is the amendment of the current year's budget, the FY 2021 budget. Typically, staff would bring these to you two or three times a year, but the way they were coming, I don't want to say, there was not much activity as far as amendments the first half of the fiscal year, and so it really wasn't worth doing an entire staff report to bring to your attention. They were all very housekeeping-related. So we waited, and then, of course, we were in the middle of the budget, and suddenly everything needed to move around. So that is what we're bringing you now, just some adjustments to the current fiscal year budget. And we're not increasing the budget at all. There's certain things that have come up where a department might have funding in one area, and they need to have an unexpected expenditure, and so they move money from an area where they've shown savings, and they move it up to cover the unexpected expenditure. And another example, we've listed these in numerical order for you, just to break them out, to hopefully make them more easy to review. Number two, everyone understood what the position analysis was, and we talked about the cost of that. We did not know how it was going to apply by department at the time that we adopted the budget. So we placed the funds, anticipated funds for that portion, in the general government budget, which is the one that's shared by all the general fund departments for citywide use. And so we just moved that money out of that non-departmental department over into each of the appropriate departments within the city. And number five is another example of the type of changes we're doing. The Fire Department received a $30,000 donation, and they wanted to be able to make the purchase right away and receive the items this fiscal year by June 30. So we did move the funding for the donation within the budget to cover that donation and show the revenues that would offset that expenditure. And for the most part, these are very housekeeping-related, but if you have any questions on any of them, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Yes, there's a total of 11 fund transfers, so it's a really small number for the budget, as Ms. Olson explained some of the idea of what those transfers were. Are there any specific questions of any members of the council for Ms. Olson?
So if I understand it correctly, it's just coming out of like one of our savings account line items?
No, it actually comes from, so say it's the accounting department, and in the accounting department, they have money budgeted for software licenses, but they needed to buy an office chair. They just moved that $100 for the office chair from licenses and subscriptions to office furniture.
Perfect. Thank you.
Makes sense. All right, any other questions of... All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we did not receive any written comments on this item. Bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 21-3505, amending Resolution Number 20-3417, approving the transfer of budgeting appropriations from one fund, department, or division to another as listed on the amended schedules DEF for the fiscal year 2020-2021.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, excuse me, Councilmember Moses, and a second from Vice Mayor Koch. Is there any additional discussion? We are ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Next is item 8.3, the Adoption of Resolution Number 21-3506, Adopting the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, for Fiscal Years 2022 through 2026. Ms. Olson?
Thank you again, Mayor. This is the adoption of the Capital Improvement Plan that we have reviewed at each of our workshops, and we wanted to make you aware that since the last workshop on May 13th, no changes have been made to the CIP, so it's the same as what you saw before, that we're recommending for adoption. So the total five-year CIP is about $63.9 million. For FY 21-22, the one year that's coming up, the CIP portion is $34.8 million, and that is about $16 million higher for the CIP for the one year than it was last year. So that additional $16 million is another reason that the total budget is the number that it is, which we'll talk about in the next item. And then, so all projects in the presented five-year CIP plan are fully funded. We have not listed any of those, any projects for which we had no funding. And then, just a recap for your review, I won't read all these to you, but these have been grouped by area. So it's got the airport versus drainage, and then the government down through water and wastewater projects. And this is just a summary of what was presented before, and showing that grand total of the $34.8 million. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there any questions of any members of the council?
Mayor question?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
None of those were federally funded. They were just coming out of the CIP, the proposed five-year, or were they, some of those look like they're federally funded as well?
There's a variety of funds to go into that. So we've got the grant funds for the FDA, for the FAA. So we've got the transit money, we've got the airport money. Not so much transit, but the airport money is contained in there, in the CIP.
I thought so. Thank you much.
And Ms. Olson, the $16 million, those are carryforward from this year's CIP budget that you'd mentioned?
A portion of that is carryforward, and then we're just doing more projects in water and wastewater primarily.
Okay.
And then there is a big $9 million project for the airport.
Yes.
So that's a big part of that number.
Yeah, great. Yeah, most of all the airport projects are funded with federal grant dollars, so it's a really small local match that we have to do. So, but we have to budget for the entire amount, even though it's a small amount of ours.
That's correct.
All right, any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing. And Ms. Williams, I believe we have one submitted comment?
Yes, one comment was received on Monday, June 7th, with the subject line of "Public Comments: City Council Meeting, June 8th, Agenda Item 8.3." Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for the opportunity to comment through written correspondence regarding tonight's consideration of Lake Havasu's Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 2022-26. While it's been encouraging to see city revenues on the rise recently and much-needed investment in our infrastructure, I am concerned to see no reference to the planning and construction of Fire Station 7 during the next five years. Ongoing development throughout our city, including master-planned communities near Contact Point, On the Island, and additional phases in the Foothills areas, is bringing additional pressure on our isolated, limited fire and EMS resources. The concern isn't simply a single neighborhood being underserved and impacted by extended response times, but rather the systemic impact of resources being drawn away from their traditional response areas. Without significant nearby outside-agency resources available for mutual automatic aid, Lake Havasu's first responders are already stretched thin. When a station is empty because the resources are committed to a far-reaching address, the neighborhood surrounding that station is also vulnerable to extended response times. Now is the time to address the need. Fiscal responsibility must be balanced with the predictable future impacts of growth. I also want to express my appreciation to Fire Chief Pete Palafas, who has been very gracious with his time regarding my concerns, and open with his vision for the future of the Lake Havasu City Fire Department. I am grateful for his dedication to our citizens. Submitted by Steve Partey.
Thank you. And to comment on that item pending our discussion in the next item on the budget, there are some monies that the chief has asked for that will allow him to assist in determining the resources that he has from a fire perspective throughout the entire community. So some of these items would be addressed. Sometimes we often refer to a fire station addition without knowing exactly what the true needs are, and the chief will embark on that if the budget successfully passes, as staff is presenting it to us in the next item. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Entertainer motion?
Mayor, I motion.
Councilmember Campbell?
I motion to adopt Item Number 21-2845, Adopt Resolution Number 21-3506, Adopting the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, for a Fiscal Year 2022 through 2026.
Call second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't want to be nitpicky, but the motion, it was July 1st, 2021, and I believe the motion said 2022.
What was that?
Yeah. Ms. Gary, will that, with a motion on the floor, work for...
What was this? I think it's sufficient.
Sorry.
Did just miss the dates, the specific dates of July. That's okay. I mean, she said fiscal years, 20. It's fine.
Okay.
I mean, you can, if you would like to amend it, you may, and then go back through, make a motion to amend your motion.
If you're comfortable with it, then we're comfortable with it. Okay. If you're comfortable, we're comfortable. The attorneys say it's okay, so we can go with it. All right, so we do have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Moses. We are ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.4 is Adopt Resolution Number 21-3507, Adopting the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Tentative Budget. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. The tentative budget was discussed during our workshops prior in the month of May, as well as the CIP, and the budget we present to you this evening has just some, very few changes to what you last were presented. The cap for the tentative budget will be $195 million, a little bit over that. And again, just to, for general knowledge for the public perhaps, when we adopt the tentative budget, the state law says that we are setting the maximum that we may spend for the entire fiscal year for FY 21-22. So that number is higher than normal. I would say higher than in previous budgets. It's about $30 million higher than last year. Much of that are grants. We've included, in case the State Lake Improvement Fund grant gets allocated to the city, we've included like $5 million there. We have applied for a Congressional Appropriations Grant related to upgrades for the police facility, and that's about $3 million. We've got the American Rescue Plan Act, which we don't know how much of that we're going to spend. That has been reduced from the original $13.3 million down to $8.5 million over that two-year period. So we have included the two-year funding, since we wouldn't be able to spend any by the end of this fiscal year anyway, so we're carrying that forward, putting both payments into next fiscal year, just in case some clarification is received, making us able to spend those funds. Again, I talked about the $16 million increase in the Capital Improvement Plan, and then we were able, through the revenues, the additional revenues that we received that we had not anticipated for this year's budget, we had proposed in the budget a reduction in, most specifically, the sales tax revenue line item, and we've come in way over what we put in the budget, and we've actually come in over what we received last fiscal year. So we were able to take some of that, what we would consider one-time funds, and pay for about $8 million worth of supplemental items. So those items that departments submitted as needs that were over and above their base budget for the prior year. So I think I have covered everything. Those were the changes that we made. The $3 million for the police station and jail refurbishment was new. We heard about that last, I think, maybe two weeks ago, so we wanted to make sure that we got that in, since it was a large number. But other than that, everything else should be just as you saw it at your last presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Yeah, so as a reminder for those in the audience at home, the total cap number is if we don't budget for that expense, we don't get to have it. So if we do get a grant that comes in eventually to the city that we may have applied for, we wouldn't be able to spend it on the intended purpose, and so we have to increase that cap. We generally have been in the $150 million range. In the past, we would expect that to be around the same, outside of any of these grant opportunities that might make sense for our community and that we might win through this. So the budget that's presented here has fully funded a budget stabilization reserves, or BSR, or sometimes referred to as rainy day, has contingency in it, has no debt financing in it, and also keeps our property tax rate flat for the fifth year in a row. So although you may have seen in the newspaper today, a Truth in Taxation ad, because of the assessed values, we will be collecting a little bit more on the property tax, but at the same rate as we have for those prior budget cycles. So it's a very fiscally sound budget. I appreciate all of the staff's work. It's a really long and ongoing process, but it includes a lot of community outreach, ensures that we're able to invest in critical infrastructure for our citizens, and provide the services that our citizens expect of us in a very fiscally responsible way. So thank you for that. Are there any questions, comments, or thoughts from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? All right, seeing none in person, we'll go ahead and close the in-person call to the public, and we did receive a written comment. Ms. Williams, if you could please read that into the record?
This comment was received on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, with the subject line of 21-2846, Agenda Item. Can we not learn a lesson from the already changed amount of federal and county stimulus monies? The county hasn't even determined what if we get any, and the federal amount was substantially decreased. Would it not be prudent to pass a budget that doesn't already exceed the cash flow in? Basic budgeting is not spending funds you don't have. We need to focus on the basics and use caution, since we don't know what will be facing us this coming year. After all, 2,000 wasn't what we expected. Thank you. Submitted by Pat Colhane.
Thank you. And again, there might be some confusion. The county has different discussions that they're having with their relief funds versus the city. So we're budgeting it in our cap to ensure that if we do receive it, it makes sense for our community, and it's a priority that we can use, that we have the ability to do that. We're required by state law to do that, otherwise we would not have that opportunity to use those funds on whatever the desired need is or citizen expectation is going forward. So I believe that comment might be related to some of the discussions the county... So I believe that comment might be related to some of the discussions the county has had recently, not the city, but. Any other questions or comments of members of the council? Entertain a motion. Or I guess I'll close the the written calls to the public, since we don't have any other comments. Entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Coke?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number two-one dash three-five zero-seven, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one twenty-two tentative budget.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Coke and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Olson, to your entire team for all of your work, and all of the department heads and the city manager that has been working very hard on this. All right, item eight point five is Adopt Ordinance Number twenty-one dash one-two-five-five, amending City Code Chapter twelve point oh eight Building Codes to adopt designated updated editions of published building codes, declaring as a public record the local amendments to the published building codes, and adopting the local amendments by reference, including the two thousand and eighteen International Building Code, two thousand and eighteen International Residential Code, two thousand and eighteen International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, two thousand and eighteen International Plumbing Code, two thousand and seventeen National Electrical Code, two thousand and eighteen International Property Maintenance Code, two thousand and eighteen International Existing Building Code, and two thousand and eighteen International Building Code Implementation Standards. Mr. Tinaman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is the two thousand and eighteen Building Code and Local Amendment Adoption. This was introduced to you at the last council meeting on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. The adoption will align Lake Havasu City with the Tri-City Area, Phoenix Metropolitan Area, and Arizona Department of Housing. It will also keep Lake Havasu City's insurance classification rating at a three, which is important for the community's homeowner insurance rates. Lake Havasu City will implement the adoption slowly and allow a transition period of ninety days from the effective date. Staff is recommending an effective date of September first, twenty twenty-one. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions in the council? Councilmember Moses?
Have have any members of the community or developers reached out with any concerns since our last meeting?
No, sir.
None? Thank you.
Mr. Tinaman's office actually reached out to that industry, so builders, developers, architects, for feedback prior to the first read that we had at our last council meeting, and then obviously through this public process, and we still haven't received any any comments. I believe you reported last time that there actually are positive comments. They they appreciate these changes because they're clarifying.
Correct. Yeah, so they're consistent with the Tri-City area and whatnot. Correct.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have a recommendation from the original founder of the Colorado River Builders Association, and I spoke with Jess a little bit manager, city manager Knitson about it in regards to partnering with them again, moving forward, that they said that they enjoyed, and it brought a lot of people to those Colorado River Construction Company that, you know, meetings, because they always discussed upcoming building codes, concerns, concerns in the field. And there was a lot of conversation within the city and our construction workers. And we were hoping that maybe we can consider bringing that back together, that connection. And I remember even the rooms being really full, and since then, they were saying, you know, we go to them, and we're not really hearing what we went there for before, which is all of this. So this would be a perfect time to probably reestablish that relationship.
Perfect. I'll reach out to them. I believe it's Lisa Theoplis. So I believe so.
Yes. Yeah, the city has a regular presence there. I actually just spoke at their last dinner two weeks ago. I know Vice or Councilmember Lane, Vice Mayor Lane at the time, has spoke to them many times, and many members of council have have attended their meetings in the past as well.
When you were speaking, did you discuss all these changes with them?
Not specific changes, but globally, what the intent of the code is from a global perspective.
Right.
And then was available to answer any questions afterwards.
Okay.
But.
I remember specific topics, like they would take one, and we'd have that discussion, and it would be on the floor, take a little bit of time, and we really enjoyed that.
Yeah, fantastic. And the building community, if they they want to do that, can reach out to us, and we can set that up for sure. So. All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Tinaman? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we did not receive any written comment on this item. Bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number twenty-one dash one-two-five-five, amending City Code Chapter twelve point oh eight Building Codes to adopt designated updated editions of published building codes and local amendments by reference effective as of September first, twenty twenty-one, in accordance with the staff's implementation plan, and declaring the local amendments to the published building codes a public record.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point six is Adopt Ordinance Number two-one dash one-two-five-six, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter twelve point twelve International Fire Code to adopt designated updated edition of published international fire code, declaring as a public record the local amendments to the published international fire code and adopting the local amendments by reference. Division Chief Hartman, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we're bringing back the code that was brought up two weeks ago. There were some questions. We've had an opportunity to look into those, to bring some answers back to council. One of them specifically was on the crowd manager position. We have verified a couple of things, first being that the code does have exceptions, allowing us the ability to be flexible in those numbers and control that. Second to that, we did have an opportunity this past week, the chief and I, to sit in the crowd manager training class to get certified as crowd managers, to see what would be involved with that. It was an online course. It took approximately an hour to do that. One of the things that we did note in the course was that the crowd manager position really emphasized interior locations, events that happen inside of buildings, with the emphasis there being on the ability to get out safely, get out and evacuate. And that's where the crowd manager positions would come in and be valuable. So the other thing that wanted to get looked at was A-two occupancies and the new code requirement for existing buildings that have more than three hundred people to have fire sprinklers. We did go back and research that again to confirm our original findings, and that was that there are no occupancies in Lake Havasu that will be affected by that. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions of council to Division Chief Hartman? Yeah, thank you for going back and taking the feedback from council and looking into those matters. They they were obviously very important to council at the time. And I think it'll be good for the safety of our citizens using these facilities, and then, of course, also our business community that's operating them. So thank you.
Yes, sir. I agree.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
So I believe David Diaz here. One of the things that came up was there was a one person for crowd control per two hundred and fifty people or something that came up at the last meeting. But that that didn't seem like that was indoors. They were specifically referenced, like we had Desert Storm, and there was, you know, thousands of people down there, and did we need two hundred volunteers? Is that addressed?
That was one of the things that we looked into. The crowd manager position was originally intended for indoor locations, but it is also applicable to outdoor locations. There is some flexibility there, and that was one of the things that I mentioned. The code itself actually gives you a caveat, an exception, if you will, that allows local authorities to make those decisions on those numbers that we need. It does say for indoor locations, for example, that two hundred and fifty needs one, and then it goes up from there. With outdoor locations, we do have the ability to make adjustments with those numbers, specifically because, again, it does reference interior locations. When you're outside, for example, you mentioned Desert Storm on McCulloch. Evacuation is is more straightforward, because obviously we're outside. So basically, you can exit McCulloch in multiple directions. So.
Yeah, and then also from that discussion, David was the fire code official is the fire marshal locally. So it would be Division Chief Hartman making those calls when when it goes to a special event planning going forward. Any other comments during the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we do not have any written comments on this item. Bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion?
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Coke?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number two-one dash one-two-five-six, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter twelve point twelve International Fire Code to adopt the twenty eighteen edition of the published international fire code and the local amendments by reference effective as of September first, twenty twenty-one, in accordance with staff's implementation plan and declaring the local amendments to the international fire code as a public record.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Coke, and we have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, a current events. Are there any council committee reports?
I do have one. Sorry.
Councilmember Moses?
Let me get to it. Yeah, for the girl like Havasu, I we had a meeting. This is from actually about a month ago. We have another one coming up this this week, I believe. But I have some good news from, because, you know, we they were discussing budget cuts going forward with with their new contract and all that, and they won't be reducing any sponsorships to any one. They won't be cutting any event sponsorships. They'll just be giving a little less to each one over there, kind of spreading it out. So no events should be going away in that in that respect. They are, along with a few other people, but in the planning of the fiftieth birthday of the London Bridge and and planning a big extravaganza with concerts and plays and the Outboard Race and kind of something happening every every week, weekend kind of deal. So very encouraging and should be a lot of fun. I believe that's in October, correct? Yeah. And then we had a presentation about some of the advertising efforts that will be going forth and some different options that we can do for advertising and and really kind of seeing their plan come into fruition there. And then they also received an award for their water, earth, and air. And water, earth, air, and fun. It's their elements campaign. They received a marketing campaign, which, if you look at most cities, it's just like, hey, come to come to Awatuki. But they actually put some creativity behind it and won an award for their efforts. So and that concludes.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moses. This afternoon or this morning, Councilmember Campbell and Ms. Gary joined me for a metropolitan, or excuse me, Mojave County Water Authority meeting up in Bullhead. Really, the most significant piece is is about the drought. We've heard a lot about it in the media and how that's determined. And where droughts are declared are based on the lake meets level in August of each year. It needs to be above a thousand seventy-five feet, and they're expecting it to be below that. So they're they do fully anticipate a drought, an official drought to be called, which is no surprise to any of us, because we've been in a drought for for many, many years. The impact to Lake Havasu City citizens is it will not be felt during this this first item or this first drought call. But obviously, it's just a pause for concern for us all to understand water conservation. But our citizens do a really fantastic job leading the way on conservation in Mojave County. We'll continue to do that and remain focused on on that item. And obviously, water will be a very large topic as for the state, for the region, for the Southwest going forward, as some of the DCP, the drought contingency plan that was passed about a year and a half ago, it comes to a time that has to be renewed in twenty twenty-six, which seems like far away, but that's like tomorrow in in this world. So we'll be having a lot of conversations there. But we had those discussions, and they they were positive, and we'll continue to remain focused on on water and water needs for our community. All right.
Do I mean, do any talks ever come up of refiguring water allocation to cities during any of those meetings? Or they're not anywhere? They're not at that point yet?
We have our entitlements for Lake Havasu City that are defined by contract, and past administrations and councils have been very very focused on water and have really set Lake Havasu City up in a very good position for our water entitlements for our community. And so we continue to to manage those with an eye for the future. But we're in a good position, thanks to leadership of the past and the present. I mean, it continues to go on to ensure that Lake Havasu City has secure water rights. All right, item ten, future meetings. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P M. It's a regular meeting, but we also will have our final budget adoption there. And then on Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P M, we'll have a regular meeting, but that also will be our property tax levy adoption. Item eleven, any future discussion items? All right, moving on to item twelve, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Thank you, everyone, for being here and joining us. Be kind.